There are thirteen participants in the meeting. You have been put on hold by the host. You cannot listen or talk until the host releases the hold.
So I'll do it this way.
Oh, Leonard.
Hang it. All right.
Are we ready now?
Okay, she's got a second.
I'm ready. I'm not muted, am I? Be careful what you say. I'm waiting for the all-clear from Ingrid.
Yeah. Give us thirty more seconds.
Okay. Oh, you've got your rainbow glass.
This is my right hand. Is everybody, uh... Looks like it's the opposite on one.
Yeah. Yeah, we've unmuted everybody.
I'm not playing around when they're there. To the story of a lovely...
And I'd like to welcome everyone to the City Council Meeting of May 21st, 2020. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and if you'll join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So I'm going to start with a little disclaimer here at the beginning. This meeting is compliant with the Governor's Executive Order N. 2920, issued on March 17th, 2020, allowing for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. The purpose of this is to provide the safest environment for staff, council members, and the public, while allowing for public participation. The public may address the council using exclusively remote public comment options. The City Council Meeting will be an exclusive virtual meeting. Council members and staff will be video conferencing. Please mute your audio and use the raised hand icon for a turn to speak. As for the members of the public, the City Council Agenda Materials may be viewed online at www.brisbane.ca.org. This meeting is being broadcast on Channel 27 and live-streamed on our YouTube channel For remote public comments, the following email and text line will be monitored during the meeting, and public comments received will be read into the record during Oral Communications 1 and 2, or during an item. The email address is ipadia@brisbaneca.org, and the text number is 626-219-2922. So with that, let's get to the right page here for our meeting. I apologize, too many pages. I would like to do the roll call, please.
City Clerk there?
City Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Ingrid, you need to unmute your microphone.
Councilmember Conway?
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Lentz?
Here.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Present. That moves us to the report out from closed session. City Attorney, do we have a report out?
Yes, the Council met in closed session consistent with the closed session agenda. No action was taken. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, I'd like an adoption of the agenda. Any additions or changes?
Pardon me, Madam Mayor.
Yes?
This is Randy. So I believe there is a discrepancy between your agenda packet and one of the packets online where the Guadalupe Channel project is not shown on one of the ones online. So if perhaps the clerk could just clarify that that project is on the agenda, that you're saying I don't want the public to be confused if we pass an item that they're not seeing.
And that is on what item is that?
It's going to be Item H. Number one. Number one, and that is included in the councilmembers' packets.
Okay.
Be careful. I'm looking at what I understand to be the public packet. And Randy, I'm seeing Page 3 at the top. It is not the detailed summary we saw on a draft. It's just two items summarized. Is that... Do you see that online, or no? You're on mute, Randy. Is the clerk controlling the mics? Can Randy's mic be turned on?
Randy, you have to unmute. I'm unmuting you now. Why is he...
He's getting tired of movies. He's now...
He disappeared!
No, I disappeared. I'm having camera problem, which is interfering with that. So Tom, to your question on the meeting package that's listed under there as the HTML package, that does not show the Guadalupe Channel project?
And I'm in the PDF. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So that's a discrepancy I was concerned about.
That's very helpful. Thank you. If we could advise the public that if you are in the HTML package that's online, there is an item apparently missing from it. It's Item H. We'll read it when we get there. But it is in the PDF package. If you can open up the PDF. And if you have HTML, I'm not a technology person, but I think you can open up the PDF.
It's, um... Actually, in the council packet, it is not showing that.
I think it depends on which one people opened. That's my impression.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the, uh...
The council packet?
Council packet, Item H is, uh... A schedule for city manager.
That might be in the HTML. I might have PDF, and I do have it.
Yeah, that's the discrepancy. If anybody's in the... If anybody is not seeing, Item H has Guadalupe Channel Erosion Control. Can you please switch over to the PDF? And if you can't open it, please let the clerk know. Sorry, ma'am.
So as far as the adoption of the agenda, we would want to adopt the agenda with the note that Item H is the Guadalupe Guadalupe Channel Erosion Control. And it has two subsections. One, authorized publication of the notice inviting bids for the Guadalupe Channel Erosion Control Project, number 9018. And two, to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Is that correct?
Yes. And Madam Mayor, that has been posted the required period of time, but it is posted as a PDF. There is a... As a courtesy, there are two forms of the document online. The HTML apparently is the draft, I believe, because I saw much earlier draft with a gap. So the PDF document online complies with the law. It meets all the publication requirements. I just want to be clear that so councilmembers have it and the public has it, if anybody is...
Yeah, I don't have it in my packet. So the million-dollar question is, does that have to be done tonight? Is there a timing issue on this?
It's a very sensitive timing issue. Yes, sir. There's... Unfortunately, you didn't have the staff report to read where we talked about the three or four items are all tearing up on us, asking us to do it now.
Okay, all right. I'm comfortable with it. I just wanted to...
There was an effort to try to see if we could put over a couple items, and the schedule didn't permit it, and this is one of them.
Okay. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
移到 Second.
Approved by Councilmember Davis and seconded by Councilmember Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Aye, thank you. Which moves us to Oral Communications, number one. Are there any members of the public who have communicated with you, the city clerk, on this item?
Ingrid, I'm hearing you as a...
I'm sorry, I'm still checking to see if there's any text or emails. I have no written communication or text messages.
Just to clarify before we move on for the council, because of, I think, just that sensitivity, I don't think I would complain, the clerk is going to take a little more time in this meeting, in meetings going forward like this, to make sure that something didn't just come in seconds before. So we'll have gaps, but they'll be short. Sorry, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Ingrid, did the... Nothing came in, correct?
Correct. I have no text messages or email messages.
So there are no oral communications, Madam Mayor?
Thank you. That brings us to Item 5, a presentation on National Public Works Week.
Go ahead and I'll share my...
I will, Mayor. Mayor, for ten councilmembers. I think the city clerk is preparing a video that was fortunately done by the National Public Works Association, since we are seeing this virtually. But I'll just offer a few comments for you. The theme for Public Works Week in 2020 is "The Rhythm of Public Works", which was intended to challenge people to think about their community as a symphony of essential services working in harmony to create a great place to live. The term "essential services" has certainly taken on new meaning during the COVID-19 pandemic, as it has demonstrated that some of the services to which we previously gave little thought are actually essential to the first-world quality of life we live. With regards to public works, our contribution to the symphony has mostly been in the background, as always, singing "Soto Vochi". We are quiet and often seemingly invisible, but there every day. During the first two months of the shelter-in-place war, we did reduce field staffing to 50% as a precautionary measure to prevent an infection from affecting the entire crew. But we ensured that every day we had a team available to check our water pump stations, reservoirs, sewer lift stations, to respond to emergencies on our streets and with our public facilities, and to continue serving our clients at the marina. At the same time, office staff completed their assignments remotely with little to no presence in the office. As soon as construction was deemed essential by the health officer, the operations and maintenance crew returned to 100% staffing, and the safety protocols they put into place and the safety equipment they ordered are serving as the basis for protocols to be implemented as we consider reopening City Hall and other facilities. We are unable to be here in person with you today, but we will, as always, be in the background quietly serving the needs of our community. I hope you enjoy the video.
Opening the video now.
You've probably heard of Electronic Arts, EA. They're the makers of the world's best-selling computer game, "This City". It comes building a city, planning neighborhoods, managing growth. Public works is kind of the same thing, only in real life. It is public work. Public works are people that make our communities livable, from providing running water, building roads, and maintaining infrastructure. Public works shapes our community, each and every day. No matter where you come from, or what you want to do, there's a job for you in public work.
And these are not ordinary jobs, but ones that make a difference in the lives of every single person in your community, every single day. From large urban cities, to suburban America, to the coastlines of the West. Just imagine the really amazing places you go to work every day, and how you make a difference either in your own community or wherever you live.
So what do you like to do? Build things? Design things? Big things? Are you more of a leader, a thinker, an adventurer? Have you thought about what kind of jobs you would like to be doing one day? If you're thinking about a job right out of high school, or maybe picking up professional skills, wanting to go to a trade school, college, there are a lot of great jobs in public work.
And just like your symphony where you can spend hours and hours designing a virtual world, wait till you see what you do in the real world.
I'm still going to deal with the city of San Diego. Hearing responsibilities are to design water and sewer infrastructure for the city. I am a public affairs representative for the San Diego County Water Authority. I love to write. I love to meet with people one-on-one.
Are you the kind of person who's good at planning and designing? Ever imagined yourself working on a multimillion-dollar project? Public works needs individuals with creative minds who can bring original ideas in designing and planning projects of all sizes. One unique project we found is in Orlando, where there's a new state-of-the-art sports arena being built. It's a future home of the Orlando Mets. Did you know public work plays a role in these kinds of mega projects? From landscape architects, to auto path technicians, to urban designers, there's a whole lot of creative careers going on in public work.
Or maybe you like to build things. Ever think how you could literally be a part of something from the ground up? From zoning, planning, permitting, to construction management, public work is involved in parks, streets, and the construction of new city facilities.
Public work is directly involved in all the building and planning of all kinds of projects that support our city services and city improvements, like this, for example. Our brand-new headquarters, the fire department. We also just wrapped construction on a police training facility. I am a construction manager. What I love about my job is every day is different. On one day, I could be out in the dirt, boots on, talking to the contractor, solving a problem. The next day, I could be in a suit and tie in front of our board of directors.
So you see, whether you're creative type, or like a different thing than a part of a team, whatever you like, inside, outside, small town, big things, it's time to think about how you can shape the world.
How would you like to go to work in a place like this every day? Here in San Diego, public work needs to be used for hundreds of miles along the California coast. Crews not only keep people safe and busy, they also work to protect your standard of living and preserve the freedom of speech.
In middle America, Davenport, Iowa, has operators and technicians on the front lines to defeat NATO's snowstorm flood. It's public work that maintains the city's fleet vehicles, from snowplows to street sweepers, to even police cars.
Well, one of my jobs is to make all this equipment around the fence, and install it in a new police car. There's a great opportunity in public work. Very secure, with latest design of it.
From fleet management and street maintenance, public work handles the streets and roads that millions drive on to each day. Located in the heart of Austin, public work fills the city with assistance 24 hours a day, for monitoring the traffic and tunneling. This high-tech system has the ability to include traffic patterns, solve traffic issues, and monitor accidents in real time. Public work is more than what we've seen so far. It includes all the services we don't really think about every day. But if they weren't there, you sure wouldn't notice.
I'm a civil engineer for the city of San Diego. Most of the projects we work on have to do with renewable energy, anything from solar to hydrogen, to landfill gas to energy projects. We are making a better and sustainable future.
The unsung heroes of every community are the people in public work. Day by day, millions are affected by what they do in our community. They are leading the way in turning trash into energy, utilizing reclaimed water for irrigation, and implementing community-wide recycling programs that contribute to sustaining our community. As the world continues to grow and change, social environmental jobs is public work.
I'm a biologist for the city of Orlando. Basically, I manage this 1,650-acre natural ecosystem out here that we created. There's certainly some weeks where I'll sit all five days outside.
Public work is all around, on the front lines and behind the scenes, helping sustain a better quality of life.
I love what I do. Everybody needs water, and a lot of times, they don't think about where the water comes from, from here, from the reservoir, to their pockets, showers, irrigation.
Whether you're fresh out of high school, studying a degree, or hitting a trade school, consider a career in public work. In college, I never saw myself working in public work, but now that I'm here, I can now envision myself working elsewhere. Every day is different. You feel like you're really making a contribution to the region. I love my job. I come into work fully every day.
Back when I was in high school, I never dreamed I'd be working on a multimillion-dollar project like this.
I am public work.
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 So forget it! Know this, maintenance, nothing. There's a place for you in public work.
Save the future, and save the world.
Well, thank you for that, and a big round of applause for all of our public works staff and public works people who are out there maintaining our city for us. Thank you. Any other comments from Public Works Department? Thank you, Randy. And thanks to all your crew.
And thank you for tolerating both a memorial ad for us and also a pitch to get young people to come and work for us.
It did sound like a recruiting advertisement. So, thank you. So that moves us on to Consent Calendar. And we have Items B to adopt the City Council minutes of March 19th, 2020. Item C to adopt the City Council minutes of April 16th, 2020. Item D to accept the investment report as of March 2020. Item E to approve plans and specifications and authorized publication of the notice inviting bids for the Guadalupe Canyon Parkway Safety Improvement Plan. Item F for the Sierra Point Lighting and Landscaping District. And Item G for the award the construction contract for the 2020 Flurry Field Project to Graham Contractors in the amount of $223,852, and to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. And Item H, Guadalupe Channel Erosion Control, which is to authorize publication of notice inviting bids for the Guadalupe Channel Erosion Control, and to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on the city's behalf. So I have a motion to approve Items B through H. Madam? Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull Item E, please. Item E? Yes, on the consent calendar. And then I think the consent calendar only goes to F. That's not right. No, to do... It goes to H. All the way through, okay. Yeah, just E. Okay, so we'll remove Item E, and with that, are you approving the consent? I will make that motion to approve the other items in the consent calendar. Okay, and is there a second? Thank you. Councilmember Davis? And then roll call, please.
Councilmember Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Aye. Which would bring us to Item E to approve the plans and specifications and authorized publication of the notice inviting bids for the Guadalupe Canyon Parkway Safety Improvement Project, number 920-D is in David. And is there a staff report?
No, ma'am, there's not. This is on the consent calendar, but if Councilmember Lentz has a question, I'm sure that Ms. Kinzer would be happy to answer that for him. Go ahead, Councilmember Lentz.
Thank you, Mayor O'Connell. Hey, Randy and Karen, thank you so much for focusing on this area of Brisbane. I think that's great that you're going to be putting in these Class II bicycle lanes on either side of Guadalupe, from Bayshore up to that Point Pass border. I think that's fantastic. Are the identifiers that it is a bike lane, is that going to be painted green? Or is it going to be white?
It's not. It's not going to be painted green. It's just going to have the wider edge line, the pavement markings to identify bike lane and signs.
Okay, and why is it painted green? It seems like a lot of the bicycle lanes or identifiers are green. Is that like a special class?
Well, we are putting in the rumble strips like we have on Bayshore Boulevard to keep cars be more aware that bikes are there on the shoulder, that they are off the roadway, so that we minimize the chances of there being further accidents like that. The green is typically used on high-volume, not necessarily high-speed roadways. So if there's a lot of vehicle traffic, a lot of bicycle traffic, and there's maybe it's not clear that a bike lane is... Or that there'll be a lot of bikes in a certain area. And it's expensive. It wouldn't have been covered. So this was our newer transportation engineer, Justin, was really tenacious about getting this Highway Safety Improvement Plan. And I don't think they would have funded the green in this case, if I recall. they would have funded the green in this case, if I recall correctly.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know if green was more expensive than just the white.
Yeah, definitely is.
It definitely is, okay.
And then, um, it is actually more expensive, and they tend to use green in the areas where bicycle lanes are not necessarily expected. So that's why the first one we put in is as you're coming northbound on Bayshore, where that bike lane is coming up along there and it's crossing over, it's there really to draw everybody's attention to it, and that's why you also see it sometimes used as we're crossing intersections, we'll put it in in hatches to give, to give both cars and bicyclists a note, hey, something different is happening here, this isn't quite as bright. But what we, what we also run into is we run into challenges with the bicyclists, because when you start to put paint down, it tends to make it a little s- more slippery, especially when it's wet. So even though it's intended for their safety, they aren't always in love with it. So we just, we have to be very, uh, judicious when we decide where it goes.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I, I guess my second question, you know, about, you know, safety and what bicyclists, you know, love, I remember there was, uh, uh, a meeting where we were talking about the rumble strips on, on Bayshore, and we had some cyclists that didn't care for it, and, but it makes sense that, to have it in there. Um, the cyclists just have to stay in their lane, so to speak, not, not for them to move over into the street.
That, that's exactly correct, sir. You know, the, uh, I, I remember that party, the gentleman and his wife quite well, they were, uh, transplants in Oregon, uh, they were, they actually, it was very unfortunate that within a week or two after them appearing, that there was a bicyclist involved in a fatal accident with a pedestrian in San Francisco. And the reason you have a, a rumble strip is exactly what they, they spoke about not wanting. They were complaining that, well, if you're going up a hill and it's really hard, and there's some obstacle in your way, and you have to stop to go around it, it becomes hard to pedal. And, and oddly enough, as someone who was a bicyclist for a long time, and I know Ms. Kinzer's got a lot more miles, uh, under, under, on top of a bike than I do, it's that, that's exactly what we want bicyclists to do on a 45 mile an hour road. We don't want you to suddenly just dart out of the bike lane because there's a 4,000-pound vehicle coming along at 45 or 50 miles an hour. We want you to really be thinking about what you're doing there. It's, it's for everybody's protection, because we're trying to keep those two very different speed profiles away from each other. We don't want a bicyclist climbing a hill at 10 miles an hour to be joining a travel lane with a car at 50.
And then, um, you know, my last question for this, so it's awesome that we're doing our section. Have, have we talked about partnering with the County of San Mateo, as well as Daly City, so that the entire, uh, lanes of Guadalupe Canyon Parkway has these upgraded safety features?
Uh, I, I think, I think it'd be wonderful if someone talked to Mr. Canepa about that, and we get the next section in, we get the, to get the county section in.
At, at the time that we applied for the grant, there, there wasn't time to partner with them, but we, we definitely thought about it, and it would be, it would be advantageous if that were to continue, we agree with you.
Okay, no, that, that would be great. Okay, I, I will, you know what, if you could put together a nice neat little package, I will send an email to Supervisor Canepa asking him to, to partner with us, um, you know, sometime in the future.
Yeah, and, you know, we, we got this-
Karen, Karen, I can work on that offline.
And we got this grant because of the incidents that had happened in that section, you know, to qualify for these safety improvements by having these dangerous conditions and, and actually having some accidents that are more serious.
Oh, yeah. You, you can just, you know, imagine, uh, yeah, we're having incidents on the other side, when you're going down the hill and then making that, 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 that really sharp left turn to go close to the school that's at, at the bottom of, of, of the hill. Uh, I'm sure, you know, that's, uh, y- y- you know, an area that, that probably also has, uh, a high rate of, of, uh, accidents, so. So, all right, yeah, thank you for, for, yeah, sharing that with me, and I'll, I'll also send it to someone that, in, in Daly City as well, and see what, what happens.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So are there any other, uh, council member questions for staff?
No.
Any discussion?
Uh, so I, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, plans and specifications, authorize publication of the notice inviting bids for the Guadalupe Canyon Parkway Safety Improvements Project Number 9200.
Second.
All those in favor, roll call, please.
Councilmember Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye. Thank you very much. So that brings us to item seven, new business. First item on the agenda is item I, to consider adoption of Resolution Number 2020-30, confirming the pay schedule for the city manager for fiscal year 2020 through 2021, that results in a 3% salary, excuse me, a 3% increase in salary with no change in the other benefits provided by the employment agreement. Um, as a note, this is the, um, implementation of a contract previously approved by the council on July 18th, 2019, and this is in accordance of, with Government Code Section 54953(c)(3), a summary of the city manager's salary and benefits is reported as follows. The bi-weekly salary for the city manager will be $9,837.74 with an annual escalator, if approved by the city council, of 3% in July 2021. The city manager will receive 80 hours of administrative leave in August 2020 and 2021, but such leave must be used within 12 months from the time, time the leave is granted. Through the city's contract with the Public Agency Retirement Service, PARs, the city will pay for Mr. Holstein all required contributions under the 1% at 63 formula. Consistent with the benefits provided to department heads of the city, the city manager will receive paid time off for holidays and vacation leave, and is eligible for health benefits, which include vision, dental, and comprehensive medical insurance. Other benefits include life and disability insurance, as well as workman's compensation. The employment agreement also reflects a city equity loan to Mr. Holstein for his personal residence in Briz- in Brisbane, equal to 20% of value of the property, which loan will be repaid when the property sells or within six months of the management, manager's retirement. Upon retirement from the city, anticipated to be December 30th, 2021, the city manager will receive a monthly stipend consisting, consistent with other retired executive management employees who started working for the city prior to July 2008 and retirement after 2000. With that, is there, uh, staff report or comments or questions?
No.
You want, you want me to play, uh?
Right, I, I just said no, there's no additional information.
Okay. Um, any, council have any questions?
No.
Okay.
No, I just wanna say thank you, Clay, for all the hard work and dedication to the city that you put in over the years, and, um, yeah, you know, and, and great job, uh, you know, leading the, the team at City Hall, and, yeah, you, you've done excellent job, so, job's all done.
With you, but I, I will very much defer that to, uh, an awesome staff that I have and the people at City Hall and throughout the city organization who, uh, just, uh, do fantastic, uh, and make my job very easy at times.
Okay, I do have two slips from the public. Um, the first is from Renee Marmian, and will the clerk read that statement?
Um, this statement is from Renee Marmian. Um, Dear Mayor and City Council, in this time of crisis, how can the city allow salary increases for anyone while other employees are being furloughed? Families in Brisbane are facing food shortages, students are distant, distant learning, unemployment is rampant, at a time of pandemic, this is deplorable. What is the plan for the city of Brisbane to care for its most vulnerable workers? How do you justify your decision to the employees that you have furloughed?
Thank you. And then, the, another speaker slip was from Margaret Gibson.
Yes. Dear council members and staff of Brisbane, I am shocked and appalled that while looking for an update of the city's finances and budgets due to COVID-19, all I found was notices for raises for the city manager and staff. Seriously? You guys do understand that it's the beginning of a major economic impact from the global pandemic, and you are discussing raises? As a Peninsula Community Member and a public servant myself, I have no doubt that your city will need to make hard decisions that will impact the future and well-being of staff and the community, but ignoring it now will only cause severe cuts and damages to your economy later. I just cannot fathom how you think that this is the best use of time or tax dollars. You need to wake up and get with it. Sincerely, Margaret Gibson.
Does it have an address for that one? Doesn't it say like-
No address.
It just sounded like that was not a resident, so I was just curious.
Yeah, I think she said she was a Peninsula Community Member, so I'm not sure.
I, I have a question for, for, um, the city clerk, Madam Mayor.
Of course, go ahead.
Um, so Ingrid, the, the two comments, are they, um, are they for item I or for both item I and J?
I think they're both for item I and J.
Okay. Um, so, uh, Madam Mayor, were, were you going to, to talk about, um, why we're moving forward with the, um, you know, with, with those items, or is this something that, that the city manager should explain?
I, I was gonna address it in the, the next item. I can do that now if you prefer, but either way.
I would rather first make sure that we don't have any other members of the public who would like to speak or online to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, I was having-
I have not received any new correspondences regarding this item.
Okay. Um, well, with that, I will say that, um, these salary increases are part of a package that the council had discussed previously. They are agreements that we have made, and this is the enactment of those agreements. So this is not in result to or affected by the emergency that is going on currently. And so these are things we are required to do to keep our end of the bargain with our, um, employees and staff, and that goes for this item I and item J. So, um, with that, I would like to ask for an approval for item I. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm a-
And a second?
Okay.
Was that Councilmember Cunningham?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye, thank you. And I do appreciate the concerns that the community has in this, and I hope that as we move forward, we can address those concerns in a deliberate way. Thank you. That moves us to item J, to consider approval of Resolution, Resolution 2020-31 through 202041, adopting pay schedules for fiscal year 202021. And this is the implementation of contracts previously approved at a city council main meeting. Do we need to read these separately into the record?
We need to read the executive management salaries into the record, but not everybody's.
Madam Mayor, just make one point. Um, it, these were approved prior to COVID-19 also, so this was, you know, something that happened not in a previous council meeting, but, I mean, previous council meeting, but I think it was last year, right?
Correct, and these are, these are contracts that were approved back in June and July of 2019, after many meetings with the bargaining groups and many meetings with the council in a very deliberative fashion.
Exactly, okay.
To clarify, to clarify further, um, this is a CalPERS for, I'll just make it simple, it's a transparency requirement. That's what's being satisfied tonight. The agreements were made and entered into. This is arguably, it's the last step of approval, but the agreements have been approved. This is simply meeting a requirement of the retirement fund.
Okay, and so when we approve these, and we, I, we ask for a, um, a motion to approve, do I need, what portions do I need to read aloud, or will the city clerk be doing that?
Well, what I was planning to do is read the portions for the confidential management employees, executive management, and police chief. Those are the three that need to be read aloud, and I was planning to do that, but you, if somebody else wants to, that'd be perfectly fine as well.
No, that's fine, I would, um, uh, I'm just looking for, um, guidance on how you want me to word this, for, and, and asking for a motion.
Right, so for my understanding, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, as a staff report, I would tell you what the, those three, those three bargaining groups that are, were going to receive, after which point you could just approve the resolutions as they're written. But we just need to read into the record what everybody's salary is.
Okay, so then we will go with staff report, please.
Sure, and Tom Marie stole some of the thunder, saying that this is just a CalPERS transparency issue that, based on what was going on at the city of Bell a number of years ago, CalPERS decided that in order to make sure that the public understands what the employees, their employees are getting paid, you need to, in a public meeting, adopt a master pay schedule every year, and that's what you're doing right now. The contracts are also approved in a public meeting, that, as I said, was done previously back in July and, I believe, August of 2019. Uh, just to further, the confidential management employees, the pay schedule will reflect 2% pay increases in both Ju- July and January. The current field position in this group and their respective top step pay rate is the administrative services director at $101.13 for January and $101, $103.15, or, or sorry, $101.13 per July and $103.15 per hour for January. Whereas the executive management, the pay schedule will reflect a 2% pay increase in both Ju- July and January. The current field positions in this group and their respective top step pay rates include the city clerk, whereas at 6270 in July and 6396 per hour in January, the community development director at $97.81 in July and $99.76 in January per hour, and the public works director slash city engineer at $114.50 for July and $116.79 per hour in January. The police chief, the pay schedule will reflect 2% pay increases in July and January as well. The pay rate will be $114.12 in July per hour and $116.40 per hour in January.
Thank you. Any questions from council on staff, from, for staff from council?
None.
No? Okay, are there any members of the public who have not been heard previously that would like to speak on this?
I have not received any written communication or text messages.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Do I have an approval to approve items 1 through 11?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll go ahead and make that motion, but I think it'd be, do us some justice to hear from the city manager on, some background on this, you know, on how everything put together, I think, before we vote on it.
Sure.
But I'll make a motion to put it on the table.
Okay.
And that motion would be to approve resolutions, what is it, 2020-31 through 2020-41.
Correct. And do we want a second, or do we, would we like the city manager to speak first? Any city manager?
Oh, okay. Excuse me, you shouldn't separate the motion and the manager's report, so please take the management report and then come back to the motion.
Okay. We'll go ahead with the management report. Thank you.
So, thank you. So, my comments, I think, are probably more the general public who might be watching this, because I'm sure the council is very aware of the process and historical process, as well as the process we're likely to entertain at this point in time. But as indicated earlier, these are approved contracts that were approved last year after a very lengthy process of negotiation that is governed by a state of California law. It's called the Myers Millius Brown Act. It's the collective bargaining agreement, or collective bargaining law state. And it basically requires the city as the employer to meet and confer with our employees and to have a dialogue and a back and forth with regards to issues around employment, such things as wages, working conditions, locations, things of that nature. So, we obviously engaged in that process. We came forward with these agreements after a considerable amount of time and effort to do so, and they were approved last year, obviously pre-COVID. We have historically had a practice of sitting down with our employees when we have what I would describe as major economic disruptions. Those often end up in recessions, but they wouldn't necessarily have to, I suppose. But anything that's gonna be kind of unsettling to the city in terms of its finances, as well as to the, our community in terms of the services we provide. So, we have already notified our employee bargaining groups that we would like to have that conversation. We will be commencing that this summer. One of the real challenges with this particular event is that we have a real dearth of information at this point in terms of what the real economic effect will be on the city, and that, to some extent, is just being the nature, the legging nature of revenues that come in to us. So, we really wanna have a measured response to it, but also an informed response, I think, more than anything. We wanna be able to sit down with our employees and have some real information to share in this, as a point of discussion. So, we will be doing that, and we will be coming back to the council later on in the year with status reports on that. What comes of those discussions is always open to dialogue back and forth, and I never like to pre-catch those, because we never know what kinds of issues might come up or just where the direction may go. We do believe from a financial point that we're in a pretty strong position going into this event because of the reserves we have built up. So, we will be going over the budget with you in a couple weeks, but we feel very, very strong that we are in a good position. Not that this might not be a very difficult event, for sure. I don't wanna downplay the event, but we are in a position to weather, weather the storm, as it were, for the time being. We anticipate that during the first half of the year, we will get information on our various revenue sources, and we will be able to have a more informed sense of what they look like, just, not just this year, but going into the year after that and the year after that. As the council knows, you know, in recent years, I think we have really taken the approach to look at budget and fiscal issues as long-term issues and not just one-year budgetary issues. So, that's the way we're looking at this, too. I think one of the things that Stuart will talk to you about next week is some of the potential impacts with regards to PERS and the retirement system, although even an issue like that is very unclear at this point in time, because we're not even at the end of the quarter that will determine whether or not the PERS ends up in a negative position this year or not. So, there's a lot of moving pieces to this. We're very attentive to it. We're very attuned to it. And, you know, our goal, you know, going back in time, if you go back to the Great Recession in 2008 to 2013, one of the refrains that we had over the years, those years, was that we wanted to maintain our core services. We wanted to be in a position where we didn't close down any of our facilities or programs, and we accomplished that. We did reduce quite a bit in terms of personnel and our expenditures during those years, but we kept everything at least in some functioning capacity. The same is true now. The only difference in this event is that the event itself is directing us to close some facilities like the pool and some of the community centers. But as time moves on and we're able to reopen those facilities, we're looking forward to being able to do that. So, you know, the, I guess, the message, I think, probably to the community is that, number one, we're in fairly decent shape financially, and two, that we're very attentive to this issue. You know, I think members of the community that have been involved know that the city council and past city councils have always taken financial issues of the city very seriously. They're very attentive to the various issues, and that's why we are in the position we're in today, where we're in a fairly decent position and we don't need to panic. So, if there's any questions to that, again, we'll be back to you in two weeks with the budget review, and we'll have a fuller discussion at that point in time with regards to the fiscal issues.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Davis.
Would you be able to give just some insight on how Brisbane's pay rates compare to other cities nearby?
Yeah, well, I mean, that's part of the negotiation process, and, you know, historically, we have never tried to be the highest on the pay scale. We try to be competitive. Our market for employees is basically other city agencies in San Mateo County and the area. That's where people will go back and forth. We've seen a lot of that, particularly in the police department in recent years. So, there is a need to be competitive in that. We haven't done a salary review this year because the negotiations were last year, but I think at the time that we adopted all those contracts, we were basically in the middle of the pack, the 50th percentile. So, we have historically attempted to do that and realized that, again, that we didn't feel that we wanted to be the, you know, highest payer of employee salaries, but we didn't wanna be down in the bottom either.
And I don't think that this has yet been mentioned, but I think it might be helpful for the public to give a little background, a little bit of background as to why some of our staff has been furloughed.
Sure. So, the only people that have been furloughed are basically part-time people that are related to facilities and programs that we can't currently offer. So, there's really two reasons why you furlow somebody. One is a lack of money, and the second is a lack of work. In this case, it's a lack of work. We just don't have any work for these people to do. We're looking forward to being able to get them back as soon as the facilities are safe to be in and the programs are safe to run. And so, that is not a permanent situation, but it is one that's driven by this health event.
Thank you.
Yeah, Clay, just one thing, it'd be noted about when, during the Great Recession, that we reduced staff through attrition. We didn't do any layoffs. We didn't lay anybody off. And so, I think that's one of the trust issues that we've really built with employees and, I believe, the citizens, so.
Yeah, very good point, Clark. The, we've had a goal of not laying people off for a variety of reasons. We were successful in the early 2000s recession. We were successful in the Great Recession, and I'm very hopeful and confident that we're gonna be successful this time. There's a lot of reasons why you don't wanna lay people off, but, you know, you invest a lot in people that you hire and you bring on, and you wanna be able to keep them and be able to build from that base when the time comes that you can build back again. So, right now, we do have a hiring freeze on, but we're not looking at any forced layoffs in the full-time employees.
Thank you.
And if I, Madam Mayor, I could make one other comment, you know, kind of piggybacking on Councilmember Conway, is that, you know, the employees, they provide the great services that we all appreciate and need, you know, whether it's, you know, in dealing with water or, you know, some of the public work stuff that Randy had shown. So, you know, it's really trying to, like you talked earlier, you know, having that team, you know, that's really important in our community, and, yeah, we wanna keep the team as strong as we can, so.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilmember Cunningham.
I think it's also really important for the, for the people who are watching, who wondering about this whole furlough thing as well, is we're not making the rules. We're going with the orders from, first of all, the governor, and then, second of all, the county. County health is directing us as to what we can and we can't do for the safety of staff and of the citizens. So, this is not decisions that we're making just because we wanna make the decision. We're following the rules of the state and the county, county health officer.
Of course. And with that, I will recall the question, if anyone would like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll bring that motion back of approval of Resolution Number 2020-31 through 2020-41.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
We have a second.
Thank you. All those in favor, roll call, please.
Councilmember Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye, thank you. That brings us to staff reports and item K, the city manager's report on upcoming activities.
It'd be a slide that comes up. Probably go right on to the second slide. All right. So, again, as we just stated, the budget presentation will be on June 4th for the next biennial budget. COVID testing continues over in Daly City at Saramonte. You can sign up for Project Baseline online, and that's on Wednesdays and Thursdays here in Daly City. I think Mondays and Tuesdays are still down at the Event Center in San Mateo. That is really helpful information for the health officer to get to continue to refine his health orders, so we really encourage people to do that if they can. I do know that yesterday, or I guess this week in Daly City, they were basically sold out for both days in terms of testing, so there is, seems to be a lot of public interest in doing that. And just a reminder that stay updated via the weekly emails that are sent out Tuesday and Friday. You can sign up online, and we get those out twice a week now, at least for the time being.
Great, thank you. Not a lot of upcoming activities due to the shelter in place. That brings us to council and mayor matters and the countywide assignment subcommittee reports. Anyone have reports?
I have one from today for the emergency medical council, basically affirming that, you know, we're basically doing a really good job at sheltering in place and flattening the curve, especially with the most at-risk people who, the, you know, 60-plus age group, there's been a decline in cases with them. Unfortunately, there is a huge rise in cases of people in the 30 to 39 age range, and you can only speculate what that might be, but there's a lot of partying being going on and they're saying that I wish wasn't. And the cases of young people testing positive isn't alarming on the rocks. So, that was part of the thing we were talking about today, as well as the discussions about reducing our fuel load and also trying not to have PG&E turn off the power this year, especially with what's going on. So, they were really important things that we were discussing today. That's my only report.
Cliff?
Okay. Let's see, I don't think we had any, I don't think I was on any subcommittee meetings. I might have, and I apologize if I was. You know, been, you know, attending all of the county conference calls, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. This week, by a vote of the folks that attend those conference calls last Friday, we decided to cut it down to Wednesdays and Fridays. Those conference calls are always just really informative, you know, and getting the latest update, not just what's happening at the county level, but also what's happening up in Sacramento from, you know, our various representatives, and then getting that federal response from Congresswoman Spear. So, you know, I'm sure a lot of people have been watching the news, you know, Democrats are, you know, putting forth the next effort to get federal money into the local economy, but most specifically, you know, to local government in our states. And we know that's gonna be a battle. Hopefully, you know, the negotiations are, you know, responsible and respectful and that we can get some financial relief. I also wanted to do a shout-out to PIT. It's the Polynesian, Polynesian, oh, now I'm blanking out. Pacific Islanders. The Pacific Islanders, that's right. Pacific Islanders Together, thank you very much. And they are so awesome. They are the ones that organize the food distribution at Jefferson. And so, on Thursday and Saturday, they distribute over, geez, like, I think it was 600, you know, meals or, you know, boxes. Or needy folks, yeah, groceries. And so, if someone wants to volunteer, they could use some folks. And you just show up at Jefferson, say at 10 o'clock in the morning, and Raina will be there. She'll find you a position, and it, it just feels really good to get back in that way. And then, and then at Bay Shore, Friday mornings, show up at 9 o'clock, and they'll put you to work distributing groceries as well. And the one at Bay Shore, Karen and I volunteered, and, yeah, we got there at 9:00, and by 10:30 or so, 10:45, we were done. So, it's not an all-day thing. It's really like hour and a half to two hours of volunteering, but very, very satisfying.
Yeah, Raina Mafula, yeah, put all that together. I mean, she's been doing that for years, and they do the Christmas in the park at Bay Shore and all that, so it's a really good program. And, so, they really involve the kids at Jefferson in getting involved. So, that's where the Pacific Islanders Together comes from.
Yeah, you know, Raina, she's a dynamo, and all the people who are part of PIT, they are just the ni- And all the people who are part of PIT, they are just the nicest people. And they're just so caring and giving. And I tell you, it's hard when you're, you know, you have all these folks that are trying to, you know, get their groceries and, you know, they have that food, you know, food desperation. And, but they always treat everybody with such respect and kindness. And so I know that you have that connection, Clark. And, yeah, if you could just, you know, let the folks that you know, you know, how much we appreciate them, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have an update. Oh, was that the end of?
Yeah, it is, thank you.
So we had a North County Fire Authority meeting yesterday, and basically, we just accepted the annual report. Generally, those meetings are pretty short. I don't know if you have anything to add, Terry?
We did the approval of the allocation, so the division between the cities, but really, the rest of it, and it all stayed the same as far as our portion of allocation. So it was a quick meeting. We did have one member who brought up the thought that we needed to meet more than once a year. That wasn't discussed, but we'll keep you updated if that moves to a twice-a-year meeting or not.
Correct. And I don't know if Cliff mentioned this, but just in case, the county calls that he mentioned, which are now Wednesdays and Fridays, I believe all of the councils, if not most of the council, called in for those pretty regularly. So we're all really trying our best to stay informed. I would say that you can bet that every single, every single one of those calls, someone from our council is asking a question, asking for something for more resources in North County, holding people accountable. So they're really, I would say, a joy to be a part of, even though a lot of the information is tough to hear. For the most part, it's promising, it's hopeful, and it's really feels nice to, you know, collaborate on an even greater level than I think we've been accustomed to. So many of us are on these regional committees, but to be collaborating every, almost every other day with the rest of the elected officials in our county, as well as so many different nonprofits, and then our representatives at the state level and at the national level, as well as all the school board members. It really feels like we're putting all of our minds together, you know, to come up with some of the greatest solutions. So, anyway, just wanted to give a little bit more context to those calls. That's it for me.
Thank you. I believe that also Councilmember Lentz and I, last week, had our town hall meeting that was a public forum for people to get information and talk about the issues that are being brought forward and the solutions that the city is working on for COVID and the population here and how we've been helping them. I think it was very helpful. We had a lot of input from Park and Rec Department and how they are going to be going forward with some sort of childcare program going forward and heard from the community on what services they are looking for and what services they appreciate from us. So that was some really good information on what Park and Rec is doing. And we also had a comment from, or participants with the Lions Club, who is talking about their volunteer resources and that they do have more resources available if there are members of the public that need help, that there are resources and availability for help. So that is something that you can reach out to the city or to the Lions Club for that program, those programs. Anything else?
Well, you know, Madam Mayor, you know, you brought up our virtual town hall last Wednesday in the Lions Club. And I know that Clay was in on a meeting with the Brisbane COVID Response Coalition, and now they're thinking about changing the name to the Brisbane Community Response Coalition. If you could talk a little bit about that, Clay.
Yeah, we had a really good conference call yesterday with Helping Hands, the Lions Club and city staff. And there are a lot of enthusiasm for the program, a lot of feeling that it's filling a need, but also believe that the need is not specific to this event and will continue on for some time. So there was an interest in changing the name and, I guess, promoting a little bit more continuity to it. The city has put some soft time into it in terms of some staff time to answer phones. And, you know, Trish down in Parks and Rec has been very much, I guess, up in Parks and Rec, I should say, has been very much involved in assisting in that. And Caroline has done a great job early on with the website and a lot of the communication stuff. So we can continue to provide support. And again, there's a feeling that this fits a need in the community.
Thank you. So that moves us on to the city council meeting schedule. And this shows that our next meeting would be June 4th, 2020, followed by June 18th, 2020. And then depending on workload, show the cancellation July 2nd through the 20th. Has everybody gotten that on their calendars? Great. Any problems or conflicts at this time? No big travel plans? Okay, so that brings us to written communications. And we had correspondence between April 16th and May 21st from Lucas Gott Health regarding city pins, Mary Beth Bionski regarding Telo from the CDI, Gabe Garbiel Garcia regarding June Pride Month, Gita Dev from the Sierra Club, Loma Prieta Open Streets, Dr. Terry Deloria from the Jefferson Union High School District, he's superintendent, updates families and students. Again, from Dr. Terry Deloria from the Jefferson Union High School District, updates to family and students. Winefield Associates for Calipa to stop vapor intrusion. From Dr. Terry Deloria, Jefferson Union High School, for an update to families. From Francisco Ortega Correo regarding reopening the economy and clean products. Margaret Gibson regarding the May 21st meeting. And Renee Marmian regarding the May 21st, excuse me, the May 21st meeting. So that brings us to oral communications. Number two, is, does the city clerk have any members of the public who would like to be heard?
I have two emails that I need to read into oral communication. First one is, "To the Honorable City Council Members of Brisbane, COVID-19 has created an environment of fear, social isolation, and unexpected impact on our mental health, even more so for the vulnerable members of the community. On behalf of the LGBTQ Commission of San Mateo County, writing to ask for your support of the LGBTQ community in Brisbane during Pride Month by issuing a proclamation to declare June 2020 as Pride Month for Brisbane and to raise the rainbow flag for the month of June. These measures are intended to bring visibility to the forefront of your city for your LGBTQ residents, allowing them to know they are seen and they are important, and that Brisbane is a leader in promoting equal rights and inclusion. During this time of social distancing, the simple acts of visibility create a deeper sense of connection and inclusion for everyone. Touch to my email is a template for a pride proclamation as well as San Mateo County's Pride Proclamation being issued on June 2nd. I thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, Leland Anders, LGBTQ Commissioner."
Thank you. Did we do that last year? That was nice. So do we need to do that? Do we need to put it on the agenda, Clay?
I think we were already progressing to do that, and I know we're going to be flying the flag as of June 1st.
Okay, cool.
So last year, we had talked about putting up the flags during Pride Weekend down Visitation, and I know that at the time, we had discussed that it was too short of a timeframe in order to order those. And I'm wondering how bad, how bad of like an expenditure that would be and, or if we should just wait for next year. But I still, I was hoping that we were going to do that this year.
Okay, well, we'll look into that. I don't believe we purchased them for the, for the flag on Visitation, but we definitely were planning on City Hall Fire Station, Community Park.
Great, thank you.
And then our second correspondent is from Prem Law. He had a question about fire prevention and tree trimming. "If PG&E has done a poor insufficient job of trimming trees near power lines, can Brisbane residents request the assistance of the City of Brisbane to complete the job to help prevent fires?" Thank you, Prem Law.
I would think that's something that he should reach out to the city hall to find out if that's possible.
You should definitely get ahold of, see there the Public Works Department, or you can send something into Ingrid or myself, and we'll track it down.
Great, thank you. And with that, would I have a motion to adjourn? Go move.
Second.
Enroll call, please.
Councilmember Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham? Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye, thank you very much.
All right, take care, everyone. Stay safe, stay resilient. Bye-bye.
Good night.
Tommy at Sacramento.